Evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 10, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Barbara, would you please take the roll call?
Chairman Curry.
Here.
Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Ms. Corbino.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
And Mr. Sbarro.
Here.
Welcome to our planning board. Nice to have you onboard, Chris. And I'd like to thank Dennis for filling in for me last meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
First on our agenda is two time extensions. The first one is for the grant point. It's a re-grant. It's a request for the seventh 90-day extension. We're in receipt of a letter from our town planner. This is an extension for subdivision re-grant or final subdivision approval, wetland, steep slopes, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permits as per the Resolution 2017-10. What they're requesting is an extension from May 3, 2019, up to and including July 31, 2019. Any comments? Saret?
No, we have no problems with this.
Make that motion that we approve that extension?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a request for a time extension for Artis Senior Living. I think, I don't know what number this is.
Doesn't say.
Doesn't say, but we're also in a receipt of a letter from our town planner concerning this. This is for the request for the extension for site plan approval, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permit, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, and a wetlands permit. They're asking for an extension from April 11, 2018. Oh, no, it was, I'm sorry. That was the original extension. This one, they're asking for April 12, 2019, up to and including April 12, 2020. Can we get, can we do one year?
Yeah, the reason this, we're not, they're not up to the 90-day
Okay.
extensions. They get one opportunity for a one-year extension to the site plan. This is that they're taking that first opportunity to meet the conditions of the site plan. So that is what they're asking for at this time pursuant to sections of the code that permit that are 170-114 H&amp;K.
Okay. Did you mind?
Saret, what is, pardon me, what is the plan there? Are they, do they have a lease? Do they buy the property? What, where do they fit in? There's a piece of property there. Artis is talking about it, but have they signed the lease or bought the property? They're asking for extensions. We don't even know what.
I'm going to ask the representative for Artis to speak to that. You have approved their site plan. Exactly what their relationship to the property owner is, we'll have the attorney address.
Yes, good evening. Diana Colev from the firm of Del Bello, Don Ellen, Winegarden, Weis, and Whitaker. And as you've discussed, we're here tonight for an extension of the approvals that were granted on April 11 of 2018. This is the first extension that we're seeking. I cannot speak to the current arrangements in terms of the relationship between Artis and Somers Realty and the plan hamlet, but I do know that we are proceeding very diligently to complete the conditions that were required prior to the signing of the site plan. So we've moved forward with that, with all of that, and we are going to be making a submission next week for, to answer the comments that the town engineer had on that.
So.
I didn't understand the last statement. Your voice dropped.
I'm sorry.
When you make the submission next week, you will address the issue he raised?
Well, we, I can look into that issue, but the main, the main issue that we're going to be addressing is going to be the engineer's comments on the water engineering report and any other outstanding comments.
But they can't answer the question?
Any other board member comments?
Yeah, well, I just, you have no knowledge of whether that this, that they, have they closed on a deal or not? Or you're, that company is doing all of this work with, with no ownership? Is that what you're saying?
No, I apologize. Peter Weiss is usually the attorney who appears before you on this matter, and he has more information regarding that, and that's something I could look into for you, but he was not available tonight for this appearance.
Okay.
Why don't we do this, since if we do approve this extension, we theoretically won't see you before a year unless something happens? Would you just ask him to put in writing the board members' concerns?
Yes, yes, we can definitely put this.
Fair enough.
Did she just say that she was making a submission next week?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean.
But that's, but not, but not to us, I think just to the, just to the engineers, right?
Yeah, that would be, that would be to respond to the engineering comments, but in, to just be more specific.
And you can include, you can include answers to their questions if you would.
Include answers to these questions in that report.
Sure.
Yeah, fair enough.
Just to, yes, just to clarify, you're asking for what the relationship is in terms of, like, lease.
What's the status of the contract between the two parties?
Of the contract, between the two parties, okay. Okay.
Any other questions or anything else you'd like answered? All right. I'll make a motion that we extend, well, we actually have two extensions, right, Saret? Yeah. This is the one for the one-year, which is pursuant to Section 170-114, and that's for one year beginning April 12, 2019, up to and including April 12, 2020. Then we have to approve a 14th 90-day time extension for the amended conditional final subdivision plan.
You're doing the first one first?
I did. The first one, that is the one I just read. I'll take a vote on that.
Subject to receiving?
Subject to receiving answers to our questions.
I'll second it.
On favor? Thank you. Okay, then the second is a motion to approve a 14th 90-day extension, and that would be from March 5, 2019, up to and including June 2, 2019, pursuant to Town Law Section 276.7C and Section 150-13M of the Code of Town in Somers, with the condition that an easement map for water and sewer systems have a note that there will be no further subdivision and will identify the tax ID numbers for the lots, and a declaration of covenants and restrictions be drafted to include the above two restrictions. Any comments on that one? Look for motion.
So moved.
On favor? Thank you. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is project review for the, for the, I'm sorry, the public hearing for the town center at Somers. Before I open the public hearing, Saret, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
No, essentially, just, I mean, they can update you as well, but there was action that was taken at the town board level. Remember, there are two things going on here at the same time. One is the application for extension of the district, which is a town board action, and what is before the planning board is the site plan approval. And the board took action on the extension of the sewer district at its meeting of April 4.
What actions did they take?
It made a secret determination, it issued a negative declaration, and accepted the resolution to extend the sewer district. So you are in a position, should you so choose, one, to open certainly the public hearing, take testimony, and make a decision to close or keep open the public hearing, and then determine how you want to act on the site plan.
On the site plan. Before I open the public hearing, why don't we just hear from Representative from?
Good evening. Jody Cross from Zarin &amp; Steinmetz, here on behalf of our stat bitle. So we're here tonight in connection with the application to construct the infrastructure in order to connect to the Heritage Hills sewer, sewer plan. So we're looking for site plan approval, stormwater management, and erosion control and sediment control permit, a wetland permit, and a special exception use permit because it is in the groundwater overlay protection district. Just by way of background, and I know the board is aware of this, but since it's a public hearing, for the benefit of the public, you may recall back in 2017, we were before your board looking for certain site improvements relating to facade and circulation, and at that time was when DeChicos and Somers Crossing were getting their approvals, and they had sought to have the sewer district extended, and your board suggested it would be a good idea for us to do the same. So we did agree to do that, and it was a condition in the site plan approval back in 2017. So since then, we went ahead and we negotiated the agreements, we entered into agreements with their sufficient capacity, et cetera, and we made our application to the town board to extend the district and to your board for the necessary infrastructure. As Saret noted last week, the town board at their April 4 meeting, they did declare themselves lead agency, adopted a negative declaration, and accepted the petition to extend the district, and I understand it's been filed with the Secretary of State and the county clerk as required under law. So at this point, we're here to present what the, the site plan, and I'll have Rob explain that a little bit more. The last memos we received from your planning consultant and your town engineer, it appears aside from some technical issues that appear to be things that could be conditions, I think we've addressed all substantive comments of your staff. So we're here tonight for, to hear any comments from the board, from the public, and to answer any questions you have. I do, one other thing is that we had, we had asked for someone from Heritage Hills to be here. They were not able to attend because I know, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I know some questions came up regarding the violations. I believe it was yesterday, Joe Barbagallo was at the site and was given a full briefing of the status. Seems that everything's up and running, and I'm told that it could be as early as the end of this week that DeChicos has granted permission to hook up. This is all hearsay, so I'm just passing on the information that was given to me.
Oh, that sounds wonderful.
I'm sorry?
It sounds wonderful.
Question. You just said from Heritage Hills.
From Heritage Hills Sewer Company.
You're, that's, that's who you're referring to?
Yes. To clarify, yes. I apologize for that. So I'll pass the, oh, well, unless you want to, I don't know if you want to hear from Rob before the hearings open, or if you want to open the hearing first.
They said five to eight days on the change in the pumps.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, did you want to give a little?
Sure.
Yeah, because just for the, for the public, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Aiello, the engineer for Earth Stat Bitle Properties. The site plan that was submitted to your board includes Route 202 here on the right side and Route 100 over here on the bottom. The DeChicos supermarket is located here on the plan. The application includes putting all of the existing buildings on the site onto the municipal sewer system by way of three separate pump stations. There would be one pump station located in this location here, and that would serve this building, highlighted in blue. There would be another pump station, which is actually an existing pump station, which would be retrofitted in this location here, serving all of the buildings in orange. And then a third, smaller pump station here, serving the professional building, which is shown in pink. All three of these would be put into separate force mains, which would connect into a manhole on the DeChicos property, and we actually installed those mains already before they paved their parking lot. With regard to the items we're here for site plan, Jody had mentioned the various permits that we're seeking approval under in your ordinance, but in terms of the wetland approval, this right here on the adjacent property, the Somers Crossing property, is a DEC wetland, and it's what associated 100-foot buffer or control area is this area here. So this work, which includes the pump station and a generator, and the piping is within, or partially within, the DEC buffer, so that is what we are seeking, both a wetland permit from you and also will require one from DEC. Because we are in the watershed, the New York City watershed, and we have over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, we will need to go to their department for an approval of the SWIP, which is essentially a erosion control plan. So since our last meeting, we did confirm that these two generators will be propane fueled, and we've submitted the details for that. We've relocated this generator. We originally had it over here. We pushed it further away from the adjacent townhomes on the Somers Crossing site, and we also provide, provided 550-gallon propane tanks for both of the generators. We've reviewed the town engineer's memorandum. We believe there's just minor erosion control details we need to work through with them in addition to the permits and approvals we need from the Health Department, from DEP and DEC, but we have no problem addressing those, you know, comments with the town engineer going forward.
Any town, any planning board member questions before I open up?
First of all, you, not to be nitpicky, but you, you mentioned in your statement, you said municipal sewer department. Where, that, this is not connected to anything with regard to municipality. This is a private, this is connecting to a private company, right? Okay?
Correct, which is indirectly controlled by the town.
Well, everything's controlled by the town, but that's.
Right, yeah, but it is the heritage works that we are connected to, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to mention.
And it's a public sewer.
All right. Do you have any kind of guesstimate about when this might be operable? Do you have any, I'm thinking about that? I know you have a lot of permits to give.
Yeah, we have to go through the permitting process. I would think we have another few, you know, another few months of permitting and approval wrap-up to go through, and we've been working with contractors on pricing of this, so we're ready to start construction, you know, as soon as we get our permits. Just checking with our representative from Earth Stat Bitle to make sure I'm saying the right thing, and I got an out of approval. And yeah, as soon as we obtain our permits, we can, well, we plan to proceed.
Do we know how long the construction will take once it's, you know?
I'd say, yeah, three to four months.
Do you have one of those in there?
Okay.
I have a question regarding the generators.
Yeah.
It was a question that was received from one of the town committees regarding them. The intent for those generators, are they emergency standby generators, or will they be running all the time to operate cooling equipment or something like that?
Those are emergency standby generators.
So if we lose power, if your facility loses power, then those would kick in to keep stuff cold or refrigerated or power on, assumingly?
The purpose, their purpose is to keep the pumps running so that if people are using...
Okay, so it has nothing to do with?
Correct. These are, these generators that we're proposing, the one in this corner and the one in this corner are solely for the pumps.
Strictly, okay, understood.
Correct.
Thank you for that question.
And they'll be exercised on a weekly basis for about an hour, but they'll only be used for an extended duration during a power outage.
And do you plan to bury the propane tanks, or will they be above ground?
No, they'd be above ground.
No other questions?
Any other questions? Before I open the public hearing, Barbara, has some public notice going out?
The notice was published in Somers Record on Thursday, March 28, and the notices to the neighboring and abutting properties went out saying dead.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Any other board comments? How does the board feel about closing the public hearing?
No one wishing to be heard.
No one wishing to be heard, heard?
I'll move when we close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, I guess we have to take some actions based on what the town board did.
Yeah, let me just mention, in Joe Barbagallo's absence, I did discuss with him the outstanding items in his April 5 memorandum. There are a number of items that the applicant still has not fully addressed. Joe felt if the board closed the public hearing and wanted to move forward with site plan approval, that he was okay with that as long as there was a condition that all of the conditions of their April 5 memorandum be met prior to signing of the site plan.
You okay with that?
I agree.
Yes.
Is the board okay with that?
Yeah, there's an item not addressed.
All of those items.
Yeah, right.
Several, several items partially addressed and two not addressed.
Yes, we're fine with those being conditions of approval or of signing.
Board okay with that?
So go for a resolution at our next meeting?
Will you have it for your next meeting? You won't have it for your next meeting. I'll be on vacation.
So it's made, so the June meeting?
Is that all right?
Is that okay? Yeah?
Yeah, as long as we could still move forward with our processing our approvals, since we have our negative declaration, we're fine with that.
Okay.
You still have to meet all your conditions.
Okay, yeah.
It'll give them time to.
Well, we didn't want to be, we didn't want to be delayed with our outside agency approvals for two months, but I think we could move forward because we have.
But since we have the secret declaration.
Yeah.
Okay.
And any of those unaddressed items that can be addressed in the interim cleans up, cleans up the resolution.
Right.
And some of the unaddressed are getting the permits from outside agencies, not all of them, but some are.
Right, okay.
So we'll be, so this will be the June agenda then?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want it on the June agenda, or do you?
Well, if they, if they have the items cleaned up, and if the items cleaned up, it's going to be a smaller resolution, I would assume, and clearly cleaner. Oh, I'd like that one, clearly cleaner, huh? Not bad.
But there, very, there's not a good chance that they're going to get their permits.
Tim Allen and Bibbo Associates, real quick, DeChicos got approval today to start to open their, to start the operation of opening, not final operation and opening, but so all this, all this blends into that, and it's, it's good news for everybody in town. Everybody's looking forward to that.
Okay, that means that the consent order has been resolved?
Not the, not on the, on the plan, but the temporary bypass and all the, all the infrastructure that's put on has been accepted by the Health Department. So therefore, we're proceeding on that note, and Heritage should be, or I'm sorry, DeChicos should be at least getting the operations close to opening.
Are you saying they, you're saying that they have received from the Health Department approval, or?
We've received verbal approval from the Health Department that the bypass was okay, therefore are all of our calculations and starting the process of opening DeChicos is okay. That's not to say that DeChicos can open tomorrow.
I understand.
So I just want to be cautious on that, but nonetheless.
It'll probably take a month, I'd assume.
They're going to need, they need probably five weeks anyway to open them.
But they can piggyback on that too, then?
Exactly.
The speed.
I'm not trying to complicate their application.
No, I know.
There's a question, but they're, they're still doing work on the, on the, on the sewer, the sewer works.
The pumps.
The pump stations.
Correct. That's, that's what I'm talking about right now, is, is.
That's the final step.
What we've done is we've, they've accepted the bypass and everything else that's, that's allowed, and therefore they're allowing, they're, I'm assuming today they'll, they'll be allowed, well, actually today, they, they said there's no, no discourse to the bypass, and secondly, in follow-up to that, to our conversation with the Health Department this morning, there should be no problem with DeChicos starting to prep and everything, getting water on to their site so that they can start to open.
What I'm saying is that.
And the question back is, is the sewer treatment plant done? I believe they're still in testing, and that's, that's the issue that needs to be resolved prior to final opening of DeChicos and Somers Crossing.
And, I mean, it's also depending on, if I understand, the Department of, the Department of West Side Department of Health is not going to give approval until that, till the sewer company is, is functional, right? I mean, they can't.
On final approval, yes, you're correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to.
They can, they can start their operations, they can, on a limited basis, and they can, they can do what they need to do, but nonetheless, final approval will be subject to the treatment plant being signed off. That's the whole McGill in the, in the room, and we'll all say that, is, that's, the final sign-off on the sewer treatment plant will be to everybody's benefit in the town.
They need a certificate of occupancy, once, once everything's settled, before they open up.
On Somers Crossing?
Honey?
On Somers Crossing, or the?
The supermarket.
From the, from the, from the town standpoint, I think DeChicos is ready to open.
Oh, they already have their seal.
They've been, they've been ready for, for months now, or actually a year.
Since December.
But obviously, we're dealing with this issue of sewer treatment plant. As Rick Morrissey put in his memo, I think it went out in one of the town paper, you know, there's, it really comes back to the treatment plant and what, what's going on there, and as Bruce had just mentioned, it's, that's ultimately the goal. It's got to be done. So in support of these guys, we love us. I mean, that's, they're, they're chipping in for all the improvements also, so.
So we appreciate them moving forward.
Thank you, thank you, Tim. Any other board member comments? We'll, we'll see you in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is T-Mobile from 2580 Route 35. It's application of T-Mobile Northeast LLC to collate antennas together with the installation of ancillary equipment onto the existing facility without any increase in height. And for the record, this facility is located at 2580 Route 35, and it's in an R120 zone.
We need a better, we need a better board. Guys, it's split for a new board.
We're lucky we have mics. Thank you for your time. Getting aboard for the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder. I'm here tonight representing T-Mobile Northeast LLC for a colocation application at the existing facility located at 2580 Route 35 in the town of Somers. This is an existing 135-foot monopine. It's a monopole designed to look like a tree. T-Mobile will be co-locating its equipment at the 107-foot elevation, as shown with the highlighted antennas on the drawing. The antennas will not increase the size of the facility. They'll be located within the faux branches, so there won't be any change to the facility at all, other than the addition of T-Mobile's antennas and some equipment on the ground as well. All equipment on the ground will be located with the existing fenced-in compound, so there won't be any change to the dimensions of the equipment facility. Here tonight, just to see if there's any questions before the board, we did receive comments from the planner and the engineer. This facility has its special permit current in effect, so there's no need for an additional renewal at this time. It's still in effect, and so the only project right now is to see if there's any questions from this board for this application.
There's going to be no visual change, correct?
No visual change, because the idea is to continue the monopine design and keep it within the faux branches.
There's no, there's no site, there's no site work being done.
No, everything will be done within the existing equipment compound, so there's an existing fenced compound, so there'll be some ground equipment located within the fenced compound, but nothing will change, like there won't be a bump out or an enlargement of the fenced compound.
No, no, I understand it, but I mean, when you say it's going to be, there's going to be equipment, what, that equipment is going to sit on existing foundations?
So there will be a new concrete pad placed down for the proposed T-Mobile equipment. So there'll be, I believe it's about a 10-foot.
Joe's not here, but I'll read from his memo. The applicant is proposing small site disturbance due to the construction of a new 8-by-13 concrete pad for the proposed new telecommunications.
The applicant is proposing small-site disturbance due to the construction of a new 8-by-13 concrete pad for the proposed new telecommunications equipment. The concrete pad will be constructed within a fenced area on the property on the existing gravel surface. The applicant shall ensure that erosion is controlled during construction to prevent sediment, like, mitigation off-site. And that's really his only comment on the whole.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
So, it's gonna go on a new 8-by-13 pad that takes, yeah? I just wanted that for the record.
Yeah, I want that information out, because you didn't seem to volunteer that.
Well, understood. Didn't know that was highly important, but it'll be within the equipment compound. It's a small, uh, impervious surface, but there will be silt fences used to minimize any sediment erosion. Saret, do you have any, I'm sorry, is there any other board member com, or do you, are you have anything else to add? I'm waiting for just any other questions. Saret, or any board members?
Uh, Counselor, I have a question.
Sure.
Is T-Mobile currently on that tower?
No, they are not. So that's what this is, is a co-location application. It's an existing facility. I believe there's Verizon and AT&amp;T on this facility.
So, would this, and I understand that you're not an engineer, but would this improve service for customers of T-Mobile in the area?
Absolutely. That's the whole point, is there's a need for the service in the area, and rather than building their own facility, they found that they could co-locate on existing facility.
Excellent. And, and so this pad that you need to place is to put your T-Mobile proprietary equipment on, so that you can run this equipment and improve the services for the customers of T-Mobile that live in the vicinity of the cell tower?
Exactly. The function of the cell phone towers, the antennas on top, but there's a ground equipment that powers the antennas.
God, all right, thank you for clarifying.
Do you have any idea of how, what, what, how far out this antenna will affect, uh, carrier, uh, I know you, this is not your expertise, but the, uh, the functional benefit of this, do you have any idea of how, how far this goes out to help, uh, T-Mobile?
So I don't have the dimensions of that with me tonight. Um, as a co-location application, um, this is essentially done for, there's a need in the facility or the need in the area, so instead of building its own tower, it's doing the best-
I can address it somewhat. Historically, this Route 35, it's where, um, it's near the dam. And that's a dead area.
Yep.
From there all the way to Whitehall Corners, historically. So between that tower, when we did that tower and the tower over at Whitehall Corners, um, that gave us, for the first time, you had coverage. And of course, the fire department was ecstatic. It was, it really was a, a benefit to the town, safety-wise.
I may be wrong, but I think the range of those, uh, is dependent upon the topography.
Right.
That is absolutely correct.
So you might not get service on the other side of Laston.
Okay, okay.
And we also always have to think about it, not just in terms of the people who are living there, it's everybody who's traveling through the car door.
And it's a heavily traveled tower.
I was also thinking about whether I wanted to change my carrier.
Saret, do you have any comments?
Only, as I put in my memo, uh, we have determined that we have to make sure both the pole and, in this case, it's a new carrier, so you're voting on the new carrier, but the pole itself is in compliance, uh, because it actually, however it got there, I can't say, but it was approved, uh, by a resolution of the zoning board, and it was in compliance as of 2016. So, uh, you can allow this to co-locate on the pole, which is currently, uh, in renewal compliance.
So, we can make a motion tonight to approve this? I'm, I'm looking for board comments. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve-
You remember what they're asking for, though, is a waiver of two things, a waiver of-
Site plan, right.
And of the public hearing.
Right, okay. Let me go back a step. How does everybody feel about waiving those two, the site plan and public hearing?
I, I agree. It, it's, uh, the difference to the, um, site is minimal.
Right.
It's already within the fenced-in area that's really pre-prepared for it, and there'll be no visual change of significance at all with the addition of the antennas. I see no reason to prolong it.
All right, then I'll make a-
I agree.
And also a type two.
I'll make a dual motion then, uh, for site plan approval, uh, no need for site plan approval, waive site plan approval, excuse me, and waive the public hearing.
My second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we'll look at type two action to approve this co, uh, co-existing, co-locating antenna, antennas, excuse me.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm guessing you guys are with New Singular.
Are we doing this one?
No.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. On behalf of the applicant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, as the chairman mentioned, or AT&amp;T. And we hope one of the board members will stay with AT&amp;T if they're their service provider, but we will, uh, discuss our, uh, our application this evening. Uh, tonight, I am joined by AT&amp;T Site Acquisition Council, Virginia Deroff, as well as AT&amp;T's engineer, um, who is setting up our plans here. We should have helped, uh, T-Mobile's colleague, but he did a very good job of getting it up on that board. Uh, we're before you this evening in connection with AT&amp;T's proposed eligible facilities request. It's the upgrade, the existing concealment monopole located at 243 Route 100, which is the Majestic site off of Route 100. It's on the west side of Route 100 in the Office and Light Industrial District. As more fully detailed in the construction drawings, my colleague will go through just a very brief presentation, um, of the proposed upgrade. Uh, the applicant is proposing to replace the canister, uh, for the existing antenna and install equipment at the approximately 87 feet of the 97-foot or 100-foot, uh, existing monopole. And there is some minor, uh, changes to the existing compound, but again, fully contained within that, uh, compound. Uh, the application does not increase the height of the structure, um, and the, the changes will be internal to the monopole. Again, we'll discuss the canister modification as well. Just by way of the brief background, we did have a chance to receive and review comments, uh, from the town planner with respect to this application. We're another one of those interesting applications where, uh, this application was also approved by the, or the, the tower itself was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, so there was a renewal, uh, granted for this, uh, property last year, but we'll review those comments with the, uh, the planner accordingly. Um, there was a site inspection conducted three years ago, again, specific to, um, a, a zoning board of appeals approval. And at this time, um, I will turn it over to, um, our engineer just to go through, again, a brief presentation, uh, about the proposed upgrade, and then we can provide some closing comments just to follow up if there are any questions with the board.
Good evening. My name is Peter Lutis. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New York. This project here, as Taylor mentioned, it's an existing 100-foot monopole. Um, as you can see in that elevation view here on sheet ant 004, 4 of 8 of the construction drawings. Uh, the base section is approximately 60 feet in length. Let me just take this to demonstrate here. The base section is approximately 60 feet in length to here, which is composed of a steel tubular structure. And then the top, approximately 40 feet, is made up of some, uh, RF transparent canisters, which conceal the antennas. You can see here, AT&amp;T has two existing rad centers, radiation centers, at approximately 87 feet and 97 feet above grade. Uh, AT&amp;T is proposing to swap the existing six antennas with six proposed antennas, and with that, do a minor expansion of the existing canister from 28 inches to 36 inches in diameter to accommodate the, uh, larger antennas. Also along with that, as Taylor referred to, uh, there's some groundwork that's proposed. Shown here on sheet ant 005, uh, six proposed remote radio heads to be mounted on existing steel frames that are mounted to the concrete pads in the compound.
To the existing?
Existing, yeah.
The existing concrete.
Existing concrete pad and existing, uh, steel framing, yeah.
Could you review about what you just said about the width?
Yes, so existing, like I mentioned, this, this first section is steel, and then there's a steel mast that runs through here, which is about eight inches in diameter here, six inches in diameter here, and there's a 28-inch, uh, plastic ABS skin that conceals the antennas, so that they're not visible. Um, and because the new antennas, um, are rough, are larger, and also because of the mounting system that actually attaches them to that spine, sticks out a little bit more, they do need to bump out the existing canister slightly, um, which is represented in the structural analysis prepared by others, not my firm, but, uh, GPD, um, has prepared that along with some modification drawings to-
The 28 is going to become what?
36 inches. Yep.
I, I just know from the past, Joe's not here, but is that firm that did prepare that, are they licensed in New York?
They are indeed, yes.
I have a question about the reference in your memo, Saret. To paint, it says, uh, structural report and status of renewals, item four, paint new existing material in the modified region to match existing tower finish. And so, my question has got a variety of sort of basis to it. First, when is the last time the tower was painted?
So, the tower was constructed, I believe, in 2016, um, so most likely, it was painted when it was erected.
This is the Majestech, no, that was a renewal. It was considerably earlier.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry, then.
So the, we have, so we have a, a existing, um, the last onsite construction, uh, onsite visit that took place in 2016, we did have, and we provided a copy to the planner just for the benefit of the board, but it was, it's, it has, it's, it looks in relatively good condition just based on those visual, uh, conditions, but if the, the proposed canister addition will be paint matched to the, the existing color, which I believe is green for this, for this monopole, so it's a green monopole.
The reason why I ask is because at the time that the monopole was under discussion at Somertown Center, the applicant for that made the case that they wanted to be treated in the same way as the applicant was at the Majestech property. And I was the brand-new member of the board, hadn't been on for Majestech, and I wanted to know what fair and equal treatment was, so I had them pull the files, and in the minutes was described that the color was Enviro Green. That was the name of it.
Yes.
Now, Enviro Green, when you look at the paint chip, Enviro Green has got an olivey-green tone to it. I went to look at the pole itself, and it was much more of a Kelly Green, like a Happy Saint Patrick's Day, green! It's not olivey. So, my concern is that everybody should be aware that if you're looking in the file-
Right.
You, yeah, you need to-
Paint match it rather than, than choose the one from Home Depot.
Right. It can't be just by the name.
And we, we can certainly-
When I saw what Enviro Green looked like on the chip, as opposed to what I'd seen in real life, I was-
And I'm not sure, as, as we mentioned, it may have been because, again, the pole was built in 2004, um, it's certainly conceivable. We can absolutely add a condition or see fit to a condition of the approval that the paint be matched, not to the, the chip from Home Depot.
To the existing color in, on the pole in the field. Thank, that would be good for everybody. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That was a great contribution she made to this town. She came on this planning board. You have no idea.
You can't do much on these applications.
I tell you, that was, it was a memorable one.
So the only other, excuse me, uh, the only other comment is, is we are seeking a waiver of the, uh, the public hearing requirements consistent.
Yeah, I, I have something, and I'd like to clarify that with Taylor. I thought we had this straightened out in our phone conversation, Taylor, uh, about the status of the pole itself. This is the, what's known as the Majestic pole?
Yes.
Right.
It was my understanding from reviewing these, and I have to tell the board and all the applicants how painstaking it is to try to figure out the history of the approvals of these and what the status of each one of these are. It is not an easy, and I have enlisted the help of some of the applicant's attorneys in order to make sure that, uh, we know where each one is, and I'm trying to bring them up to date. But I was under the impression, Taylor, that, uh, what we had determined was that, uh, the planning board resolution of 2016 was issued May 11th, 2016, but somehow, uh, even based on that date, uh, because there had been years before that had been a gap, that it was only three years, and for some reason expired on December 30th, 2018, and therefore was no longer in compliance, and you were going to provide to the board an updated renewal of Majestech. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. So, if I, if I may, the-
Because I thought the impression you had given the board was that it was in compliance.
So, here's the, uh, the quandary of, of the process. So, um, as, as the planner mentioned, we went through a list of all the applic, the, the approval resolutions, because again, there was a series of zoning board of appeals resolutions before there were any planning board site plan resolutions. So the approval resolution, we're speaking again, carrier versus tower. This used to be an AT&amp;T-owned tower. The tower is now owned by Crown Castle. So the tower is what is requiring the renewal, whereas the applicant has recently received a renewal for its zoning board approval last year. But we're here now for an upgrade, and the tower itself, the tower owner, needs to come in for a renewal. So Crown Castle has been in communication with the town initially to, to, to put into motion their renewal application for the tower. So, we're, ultimately, we'd be seeking an approval, but-
Subject to?
Subject to the similar onsite inspection requirements as you, as you recently considered, um, for the Somers Common site, which had the same, which, in that instance, Somers Common still had one month left on its, uh, its existing, uh, five-year period. The reason why this was, the extent, the renewal that was granted in 2016 is not, no longer valid, is it was only granted for three years instead of five years, because it backdated it two years from the original, because it was some confusion over the planning or it and zoning board resolutions that applied to the site. So we're coming together, we're getting there, and, and, uh, Crown Castle will be, and, and our Site Acquisition Council has been in communication with Crown's counsel, and, uh, I believe it was Phil Reese had contacted the town planner, indicating we're trying to figure out who's on first, uh, so that we can, uh, get that in before this board. So we would-
Make that a condition.
Yeah. So it would be a conditioned approval on the owner, and just for one benefit of the board, uh, generally speaking, these renewals are good for, for five years when we renew an application before this board, so the onsite inspection that took place in 2016 is fewer than five years. So, we're not saying that you wouldn't require Crown to do such an onsite inspection so as to renew it for five years, but they're still good for two more years on, at least from the onsite inspection perspective, if you were to look at it as a new, if you were renewing it for five years. I probably confused the issues more there by presenting it that way.
But, but then wouldn't you have to come back before the five years was up for another inspection?
So, now, so what, so we're not, so as AT&amp;T, we're just a co, we're just on-
I don't mean you, I'm talking about, yeah.
Crown, Crown would have to come back within two years, so it would probably be to their benefit to do-
Do another inspection and get, and get the full five years out of it, right.
Right. So I just meant for the benefit of, of these, you know, the structural integrity of the tower. Of course, we submitted a structural with our application, but those are just some points.
Okay.
It's too bad they're not coordinated.
Yeah, as, as a matter of course.
The user and the owner, their renewals should come together at the same time.
Absolutely.
As a matter of course.
I know, I know. Logistically, that's-
Because they need new arrays, they need things at different times, the providers.
It would be nice.
Well, if there's no more building in town, it's job security.
Sure.
I'm sure you don't want to hear that.
Sorry.
Sure, can I, can I ask you a question, a point of, of information, because-
As long as I may not be able to answer it.
I, I assume you're no, you're more knowledgeable than I am, and, and I might show my ignorance on here, but I, I'm being relatively new to the planning board. I'm con, I'm confused about what parts of these towers are the jurisdiction of the zoning board, and what parts of these towers are the jurisdiction. I'm, I'm confused that the, these gentlemen are coming here to decide to change, uh, a cylinder on this tower. However, there, the application for the whole tower goes to zoning board.
That's true.
Okay, that's what I'm, I'm just confused about.
For whatever reason, that can't be explained, several of these did go straight to the zoning board or on their agendas, unknown to us, and got approvals. The division that we have made in consultation with the town attorney is the following. If an application for either the tower or the provider initially happened, uh, prior to the, uh, wireless telecommunications section of the zoning, which was added in 2002, if it predated that, it was originally approved by the zoning- if it predated that, it was originally approved by the zoning board and goes back to the zoning board. If it post-dated 2002 and initially came to the planning board, then it comes back to the planning board. That's supposed to be what happens. It does not always happen that way.
So, you're saying that the zoning board made this, could, could make a decision regarding something that they really don't have the right to make a decision on?
No, up to two, up to-
Well, two oh, two hundred, twenty-
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two. The ZBA are the ones that handle poles.
Okay.
After that, we did it.
Okay, but they, but, but, okay. I assume the ZBA is aware of that distinction.
Right, but the problem is they come up for renewal, so if you got, if you started out with the ZBA-
It reverts back to where it started.
You have to go back to the ZBA.
No, okay, no, that part I understand. I was just-
We're all doing our best to keep this as unconfused as possible. I really have to tell you, it is not so easy. But we're all working on it.
Can we change the rules that the ZBA refers it to us?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the new rule. Were you asking a question or is it just-
Yeah. Can, can we change the rules that any request of the ZBA, they refer it to the planning board for decision, for action?
Anything before 2002-
Forget the date.
That gets renewed, come back to us, instead of going back to them on-
It may take town board action, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it would take town board action.
Okay. Can we put it on their agenda?
We can certainly discuss it between Joe and the town attorney.
Yeah.
To see if it's-
It would be a way of streamlining the whole process. And then we could set up a tickler file.
Right.
A database with every tower in town.
And only one board would have to track it.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds much, much cleaner. Good suggestion.
Keep your fingers crossed.
So, how can we waive site plan and, and maybe a public hearing? But we can put conditions in-
Subject to?
Subject to these, yours and Joe's comments being answered, addressed, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to make a type-two action first under SEQA before we do that?
Of course you want, yeah. You want to waive site plan, the same as all the others, waive site plan, public hearing-
Waive site plan and public hearing.
And make your SEQA change.
No, I was going to make SEQUAs as a separate one. So, it's okay to town, with the planning board, we waive public hearing and site plan approval?
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion that we determine this is a type-two action under SEQA, and that no further action from SEQA is required.
Second.
I don't think you have any problem with that, do you?
Absolutely not.
So, then, the special use permit under Section 129.6, we'll make a motion to approve that with the conditions being satisfied. Okay?
Yes.
Sarette's conditions and Joe's concerns. Actually, I don't think Joe had any concerns, did he, Sarette?
His was-
I think it was just a comment.
No, he did not.
He didn't have any, so just the town planner's conditions, okay?
Understood.
And Kelly Green is not an option?
Match the poll.
No, it is the option, it's what's there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Looks like it, yeah.
But we're saying it's not an option.
Was there, just, was there a motion and a second?
I'm making a motion, I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're sorry for the brain damage we've caused. If we can, if we can help, maybe they can coordinate too, the, the tower owner and the applicants, if there's a requirement, so-
I know it's something to do with you, but I was just saying before to mean it, this is, in my book, this is ludicrous. You have to generate the cost and all this for renewals, basically, or, or even for a coexisting, seems, but-
We thank you for your time and, and the brain damage.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, Joe? On the topic of the proposed change that's been sort of put out there now, as far as the tower applications, would an applicant who had initially received their approval under the ZBA have a, would they feel they had a right, or might they, they feel they had a preference to return there? Is that something that would be within the town's, I don't know how to put it, ability to change? Or do they have like a vested right, having been there before, to return there?
It's, because like all decisions before, ZBA's and planning boards, it's a discretionary decision, although we know in a context of a cell tower, it's not as discretionary as others. It's hard to say there's a vested right because it's always-
That's a loaded term to use, I know, but-
Yeah, but, but I know what you mean, like, uh-
You know what I'm saying?
Could they argue that they belonged before that board? I suppose they could, and that's why I think it would take town board action to actually make the change, because I think what would have to happen is it'd have to be sort of an official ceding of that authority to the other board. And, and the reason that it is the way it is now is because the, the approval, the approving entity
Gets the renewal.
Is theoretically using its same standards when it looks at the renewal, right? So, so that'd have to be like a handoff of that jurisdiction in an official sense. But it is an interesting question, and it requires probably a little research, actually.
I think, going back in history, I think originally, when the first tower came to town, it was being proposed as a commercial activity in a residential zone.
Right.
Therefore, it went to zoning.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's how it started.
And that was a, that was an early, it was, it was one among many early hissy fits that towns all over America were having, because there, before there were cell towers, there was, zoning wasn't set up, town zoning codes weren't set up to deal with them.
Right.
They didn't know how to review them, they didn't know what kind of structure to call them. And, and so, they were always, in a sense, non-conforming or, or, you know, unlawful under present zoning, so-
Majestec was on a commercial site, but they were trying to put one in Stewart's Apple Farm.
Right.
It was agricultural zone for-
And there were no standards for them, and, right.
It was crazy.
So, once the Telecommunications Act came into effect, and, and it was a little more clear what had to be approved and what your right to review things was in the first place, then town codes came into compliance with that and, and appropriately made room for the concept of cell towers.
Right.
And now, it's not unusual, it doesn't, it doesn't require variances, it doesn't go to the ZBA typically as a result.
But there's site plan which comes here.
Exactly, right, right. So, yeah, but it's a very interesting question. It would be, it would make people's lives administratively easier, and, and we'll take a look to see what the legal right to do it is and what would have to be done to accomplish it.
Could, I, I have a question. Could, could someone argue, I don't want to open up this, this wormhole, but could someone argue is that the planning board was never the original approving body, that an applicant for a renewal might have to go through the process again, because it was initially done at the zoning level, and the initial investigation, site plan, and all of that was conducted by a different governing body?
I think probably not, as long as there was no lapse in the approvals.
Right.
Because as long as the, the facility remains in use and in compliance, the, there wouldn't be a, it's not a new, you wouldn't have to investigate new implications, new impacts, and things like that. You'd be essentially just confirming over and over again that things were as they used to be, or that kind of thing. Also, I think it's complicated, again, by the Federal Telecommunications Act, which kind of says that there's a very circumspect, circumspect range of things you can even talk about when it comes to the cell towers, anyway.
Everything's grandfathered.
Yeah. You know, he opened up an interesting can of worms. If somebody doesn't, and, I mean, I can think of some projects in town where they never asked for extensions, and then they had to go all the way back to zero. Yeah, no, it does-
That's my concern, and then we start again, and now we have-
Well, that's, well, that's why Dennis is-
The work.
Right. Yeah. Dennis' idea of a tickler files- You could definitely make that argument if a facility allowed itself- Right. To fall out of compliance.
Right.
Yeah. Now, again, having to start over again from scratch here at the planning board, what does it mean? Two or three meetings and they're approved, right? But, but it would normalize the procedure, you know, so, so-
But I think that's essentially what's happened. I mean, this applicant here, he, he's, he's had his last inspection in 2016, he's only brought it up to now, because he was out of compliance, he hadn't, he had renewed. So, and I think it was Chris at the time who had suggested, you shouldn't get the benefit of the full five years at that point, it's five minus the time that you, you failed to renew. So, it's something that-
Yeah.
It's kind of one of the, the other pieces that's been in play, as we're all concerned about getting a more streamlined process. So, for everybody's sake, the health, safety, welfare element, we know the towers are being inspected, reviewed, et cetera.
Yes.
So, it's, it's all of a piece, you write on it.
But the town board could, if they made this kind of jurisdiction problem, like, to make it planning board, they could easily say that an existing, an existing facility that used to go to the zoning board is now being covered by, covered by the planning board, that's not a big, that shouldn't be a big jurisdictional problem.
Yeah, I think they could, and, and as attorneys often do, I don't want to speak off the cuff on that, but I, but my, my sensibilities tell me it could be accomplished if they wanted to accomplish it, and we'll do a little homework on it.
I have one other point that, that's going to be another mind-bending problem. As it was brought up, that we have a facility that is copying the paint on another facility, but that original facility has the wrong paint on it.
Right, right.
Okay? Now, isn't, shouldn't we sort of stop this process of putting the wrong paint on the, the, the Saint Patrick's Day color is, is, was not the one that was approved?
As was, as, as you noted, what was on the chip at the time that I saw, it could be different from how it was described at the time originally. What I saw was within the minutes of the original approval from Majestec, that the color was noted that it was to be Enviro Green.
Right.
Which he, Taylor Palmer recognized was the thing. I, I saw at the time of the Somers Town Center application, we saw a paint chip that included Enviro Green. It was, whatever the name of the, the paint company was, it's a two-word combination, not Benjamin Moore, but it was a two-word combination. On that application, we ended up having a custom paint. There was an artist, and she came out with a board-
Right.
And did a whole, it was wonderful-
Yes.
What she did, it really, something special. But, but that was one of the things we considered at the time. So, it's possible that what came to be Enviro Green on the point of time that I saw that chip in, was it about maybe 2010, was different than Enviro Green as it was originally on a chip when it was first built in 2004. I never saw the original chip. I saw the description in the minutes, that file didn't have the paint chips. I only saw it with the later application.
That's quite unusual, that somebody would change, that if they changed the color, they would change the name.
Right, I, but you know how things look over time, I'm just saying that I can't, I didn't see that original chip, but I can't, can't see that it did the difference.
And the other thing too, is, is we all know just from home improvement projects, is that the chip doesn't, that it might have been an accurate chip, right? And, and they might have bought that paint, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean that's what it looks like when you put it up on your, on your, uh-
And then, when, when was this built?
Application.
I mean, it's just one fade, I mean, isn't it-
Well, yeah, but it doesn't become-
Isn't it possible that it's just oxidized?
It should match what's there, and you have to be like, and there's, there isn't a traffic jam at that point in the road, you really have to stop and look to see it from the road. It's not what I saw as Enviro Green on that chip, but it's a great choice, because you don't see it.
Yes.
And it's successful, and we can't-
So, from your point of view, the more important point is let's match what's up there now, even if it was an accident.
Absolutely, which was the whole point of why I brought it up. I don't want them to see-
Analysis of what it is now.
Yes, I didn't want them to see that name-
Yeah.
Buy the name, and then we have a non-matched problem. I really wanted to look and match what's there, because I think whether it was intended to be as it was, it was a success.
Was, is the paint up there now hideous or acceptable?
You seem to say it's hideous.
I, no, I-
No, I think she's saying-
I think it's a success.
Oh, no, it's a success.
It, it just doesn't match what it was, it doesn't match the name on the chip.
I thought you said it was like a Kelly Green.
You said it was shocking.
It is.
Well, yeah.
But it's not, but it works in that environment, in the, with trees and the stuff.
You were afraid they'd go to the file, see the reference to that color name, go buy a brand-new bucket of paint in that color-
Which might not be.
And screw up the color that's on there now.
Would not match, thank you, exactly.
So, we don't want Enviro Green.
Right.
We want them to match what's on the pole.
Whatever's up there now, even if they have to do a custom match, that's what we want. I think they got that.
Yes, yes.
We might want a reminder, we didn't see anything.
I didn't see it.
Now you got it.
No, no, no. No tail, I think Taylor understood.
Either that, or when Castle comes in to renew their permit, we make them repaint it.
Right, that's not a bad idea. Right, if that was your question, can we make people comply with the original promises they made? Yeah, we can.
Well, but, but, I, I'm sorry, I got the impression that you said that there was a, a nice, nice dark sort of hunter or-
Olive green.
It's an olivey kind of green.
Olivey green, which is compatible with trees. Kelly Green is not compatible with trees.
Well, maybe my use of the word Kelly is creating something brighter and more vivid in your mind than what I saw, but it's not olivey-green. If you go and take a look at the tower, to my eye, it's not an olivey-green, it is very different. And I spoke to somebody and, who said, yes, they understood that these were not the same color.
No, if you, if you say the color's okay, then that's fine, I just got the impression-
It's fine, but it's not, it's not Enviro Green.
I got the impression that you, you thought it was-
And it's not, and it's not just simply faded.
I-
It can't fade bright.
It had some faded qualities, but it would never, it didn't fade.
Okay.
Faded olive would have looked different than this.
Yeah, it doesn't go brighter.
Take a look at the tree, the, the tower and see what you think.
Yeah, okay.
Slowly.
I have one comment, and I promise it has nothing to do with color.
Okay.
Just one thing I, I want to say, and we will obviously look into it. I have had several conversations with some of the attorneys, and I would be hard-pressed to think if this came up before the board, that there would definitely be objections by some of the attorneys representing some of these towers. If they were originally at the zoning board to-
They want to be back to the zoning board.
They'd rather be at the ZBA than here. So, I'm just stating that, because there have been, in my looking at, back on all of these things, some conversations.
Kind of why I asked that of a question.
Yeah, so what?
So, I mean, let's not ask so what, but it, we'll look into it. Totally separate from all of this, I know you all got notices about the One West Street Municipal Planning Federation keynote address next Thursday night on the 19th. I would like to recommend it to you. I've been intimately involved in that, usually I do these for the board. There are going to be some very high-level, interesting speakers. It is on the changing economy, on two issues, on transportation and on the retail environment, and on the transportation issues. There's Sam Schwartz, if you listen to the news, he's on all the time. He's going to be, he's the guru on congestion pricing and just about everything else. But he's going to be talking about congestion pricing and its impacts, and also on autonomous vehicles. And Joan McDonald will be doing the other transportation, talking about all the other changes, Uber, Lyft, electronic vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. And then, the changing economic environment, how it's impacting the retail environment. We have two people from consulting firms intimately involved, and the mayor of Mount Kisco will be there to comment on the impact at the local level. So, I just wanted to encourage you to attend.
Where is it?
It's at the Rexon Center on Hamilton Avenue. Some of you have been there before, I think it's 360.
360 Hamilton.
You may not have gotten it, we'll make sure you get one, Chris.
Well, I could-
Do you know what the needle?
Next Thursday, the 18th.
I could tell you that Sam Schwartz is very good, because I, I used, he was employed when I was employed by the City of New York, where we were, we worked together. So, he's, he's very knowledgeable.
I worked on his file, he's come a long, long way.
We considered consulting with his firm for Complete Streets with the Energy Environment, it was one of the options that we were looking at, to help us through that plan. It was one of the options that we were looking at to help us through that plan.
Thursday, the eighteenth, uh, starts six-thirty. The actual panel starts at seven. Three sixty, Hamilton Avenue.
Any more comments?
And you get credits for that.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Barbara, forget, what's the day of our meeting? Have it? Sorry.
Uh, May ninth?
Ninth?
No, that's last year.
Slash, uh...
May eighth. It's May eighth.
May eighth, okay. Our next planning board meeting is May eighth. Um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.